Good evening. We would like to call this meeting to order and welcome everybody here in chambers as well as those who might be participating via the Internet through our YouTube channel and online as far as Zoom. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August 6, 2024. We'd like to turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith.
Mayor Watkins.
Present.
Vice Mayor Samley, here. Councilmember Eric.
Present.
Councilmember Savage is excused this evening. Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to invite all those who would like to participate in our invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Oh, and that, or, I'm sorry, that invocation will be offered by Jessica Cooper of Hope City Church.
If everybody could go ahead and bow their head and close their eyes. Father, we thank you for this meeting tonight and for the people in this room. You have appointed and allowed each and everyone to hold a position to govern over our city, and we know your word says that who you appoint, you will equip and supply their needs. I ask that you help them serve in their position with integrity and wisdom, and that as they consult you, that you will guide them in their decision-making, giving them insight and vision for our city. I pray that every decision made will benefit the people of Kingman today, and those decisions will have such an effect that the future generations will benefit from this council and the leaders in this room. I ask you, Father, that tonight your peace will be on this meeting, and in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, commission appointments. 1A Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission Appointment. The Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission currently has one vacancy with a term ending December 31, 2026. Due to the resignation of Commissioner Olson, one application from Edwin Mann has been received and provided for review to the council liaison, city manager, and staff residency, and voter registration status has been verified. Staff recommends the appointment of Edwin Mann to the Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission to fulfill the remainder of Commissioner Olson's term ending December 31, 2026. Vice Mayor, I think you are on that commission?
I am, thank you.
Would you like to share some information with us?
Sure. I did look over Mr. Mann's application, and highly qualified, and is going to be a great addition to the Park Committee Commission. He is trail lead, lead volunteer, very involved in the community, so I am pleased to put his name forward.
Okay. Would you like to make that motion then?
Yes, I would. So I recommend Edwin Mann be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission and Golf Commission for the term indicated.
I'll second. Can we have a second? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 1B Heritage Preservation Commission Appointment. The Heritage Preservation Commission currently has one vacancy with a term ending on December 31, 2024. One application from Walt Craig has been received and provided for review to the city liaison, city manager, and staff. Residency and voter registration status have been verified. Staff recommends the appointment of Walt Craig to a full first term on the Heritage Preservation Commission with an end date of December 31, 2028. Councilor Ward, you serve on that commi-- you are a member of that commission?
Yes. I have reviewed the application. Walt is more than qualified, and I recommend that we appoint him to the Preservation Committee.
Okay. Mr. Craig is here tonight. Mr. Craig, would you like to say anything to council? And you are more than welcome if you'd like to. Make sure you, before you start, yeah, thank you.
I would simply like to say that historic preservation is something that I'm interested in simply because I myself am somewhat historic. And I've, I'm currently a tour guide at Benelli House. I'm involved in a number of other activities here in the city. I am, when I lived in Riverside, California, after I retired, I was a docent at the Mission Inn. And I don't know how many of you have ever been there or seen it, but the Mission Inn is approximately a 120-year-old hotel. The city council acquired, basically owned the hotel for a while, and at some point, they voted, came within one vote, to tear it down. Now, that's important only because, like all cities, downtown was floundering. When they made the decision to refurbish the hotel, and ultimately somebody bought it and restored it, and it is currently an operating hotel, it completely changed downtown Riverside. And it is a thriving downtown today, all because of that hotel. Now, we can't save everything here in Kingman. Some of it probably isn't worth saving, but it is something that I would like to work on, and I feel that there's a lot of opportunity here in Kingman to preserve much of our history and make it something that people will want to come here to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Councilor Ward, would you like to make a motion then for the appointment of Walt Craig to a full first term on the Heritage Preservation Commission with an end date of December 31, 2028?
Yes. I make a motion that we appoint Walt Craig to a full term on Heritage Preservation Commission with an end date December 31, 2028.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number two, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out our request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Clerk Meredith, do we have anybody?
Mayor, we don't have anybody that's signed up to address you at the call to the public tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, hopefully we've all had a chance to review the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to pull E, F, G, and I, please.
So items B, F, and I, you said?
G.
G.
And I.
G and I. Okay. Can we then have a motion approving items A through D, item H, and item J on our consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Vice Mayor, item E.
Item E, I just wanted to remove this because the agreement that is before us names my employer, so I have a conflict of interest, and I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay.
Mayor, could you read that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Carl. I appreciate that. Item E, approval resolution number 5519, Rancho Santa Fe 4, tract 1953-G. The final plat and improvement plans for Rancho Santa Fe 4, tract 1953-G were approved by the city council with the passage of resolution number 4123 on May 16, 2005, with as-built assurance, assurances proposed. The improvements were not completed and the final plat not recorded. High Desert Land Holdings has acquired the property and is proposing a property trust escrow assurance in order to record the plat. This assurance allows the final plat to be recorded but prevents any individual lots to be sold until all required subdivision improvements are completed and accepted by the council. Staff recommends approval. Vice Mayor has stated that she has a conflict. Is there any other discussion on this item? Can we have a motion then approving item E, approval resolution number 5519?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item F, Vice Mayor again. Would you like to read that again? I'm sorry, I should do that. Item F, authorization to purchase a new 500 horsepower motor for city well number six. A request for approval for the city of Kingman to enter into contract with Empire Pump via the City of Goodyear Cooperative Contract to purchase a new 500 horsepower replacement motor to replace the failed motor at well six in the amount of $63,903.10 plus any taxes and shipping charges. Staff recommends approval. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just pulled this because, as well as the others that I pulled, I, just for transparency, I wanted to know where these items were coming from in the budget, and I know that it's in our backup, but I feel like it's necessary to identify that for the public, so. Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, the funding for this project is coming from the Water Capital Renewal Fund.
Perfect, thank you.
I will make a motion to approve item F, authorization to purchase a new 500 HP motor for city well number six.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item G, approval of utility cut patching proposal. This item is for consideration and approval of a proposed proposal by McCormick Construction to complete asphalt needed after water leak repairs in the amount of $156,802.74. This proposal will complete 4,256 square feet of asphalt repairs. Staff recommends approval.
I pulled this for the same reason. Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, this is also coming out of the Water Capital Renewal Fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the utility cut patching proposal in the amount of $156,802.74.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item I, authorization to purchase crack seal rubber for residential districts. This item is for consideration and approval of the purchase of 260,000 pounds of crack seal materials in the amount of $132,607.80 for pavement preservation in residential areas. City forces will apply this material over the winters, winter in preparation for the chip seal of residential areas. This purchase will utilize ADOC Cooperative Contract CTR 066732. Final costs may exceed the quoted amount due to tax and shipping. Staff recommends approval. Vice Mayor, one more time.
I pulled this for the same reason. Manager Walsh?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, this is coming out of the Highway Users Revenue Fund.
Perfect, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the authorization to purchase crack seal rubber for residential districts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four, old business, we have none. Item number five, new business, 5A, resolution number 5520, request for conditional use permit, case CUP 24-0002. A request from Madison Humphries, applicant and extraordinary storage LLC, property owner, for a conditional use permit to allow for mini-storage warehousing in the commercial service business C3 zone. A CUP was previously approved for mini-storage warehousing by the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 8, 2022, with an extension of time requested in November of 2023, but withdrawn prior to approval. A new request for a conditional use permit for the same use but expanding the original site was heard and approved on a vote of five to two by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 15, 2024. Due to an issue with the noticing of the request, the item had to be reheard at the July 10, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Only four commissioners were present for that hearing, and the motion to observe, to approve did not pass with a split vote of two to two. The applicant has submitted a written request to appeal that decision to city council. Planning staff is recommending approval of the request for the CUP with condition as noted in the resolution. City manager? Oh, I'm sorry. Glad to have you here, Mike. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yeah, I think Mayor used, pretty much explained everything that's going on with this project. I'll try to go in a little bit more detail about it. This was a conditional use permit that was applied for back some time ago to build a smaller facility on two parts, two parcels that are, they're on the southeast corner of Sierra Vista and Stockton Hill Road. The applicant then had asked for an extension of time on that original use permit application, which was granted, then they withdrew that application because they acquired more of the property, acquired this third parcel, and combined them into one. So now we have one parcel for this particular use on, under this use permit. So they're proposing a mini-storage facility on one larger parcel there at that same location at the corner of Sierra Vista and Stockton Hill Road. As Mayor indicated, there was a public hearing held by the Planning Commission back in May. The Planning Commission approved the conditional use permit on the five-two vote. We discovered later, as it was brought to our attention, that the noticing on that item wasn't done properly. We missed it by a day, therefore we had, had advice of council and consideration. We had to re-notice and then rehear that public hearing at a future date, which was done in July. Unfortunately, when we had that hearing, we only had four commissioners in attendance that night, so we had a, we didn't have a full, full planning and zoning commission. They heard the item, we had another public hearing, went through all the same conditions, the same issues that we had previously with that item. However, the motion failed because it went up with the two-two vote. We still had the two dissenting votes, therefore the applicant had to appeal that to the city council. That's why you're hearing this item tonight. It's the same application that had been heard previously and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff recommends approval. I can, I've got a PowerPoint presentation that I can go through if you'd like in more detail. However, it's what it is, it's a large mini-storage facility that's going to be placed on that site. There are seven buildings for, for the, for the storage use, and then two open air canopies for RV and boat storage on the use. Access is going to be made off of Sierra Vista with secondary access off of Sierra Road on the east side of the, behind the project, which is all located in Mojave County. Like I say, I'm happy to go through the PowerPoint presentation if you'd like to go in more, more detail, but that's pretty much the gist of this particular project.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Counselor Staley?
During the public meetings or throughout this process, did you get any feedback from the public?
We, we, there were, there were two neighborhood meetings that were held for this project. There was no one in attendance. The only item that we received, we received a letter from one of the neighboring businesses that had expressed that they had hoped that there would be some kind of retail use on that site. The site had been, all of those parcels had been up for sale for many, many years before it was finally sold off with the applicant that presented, presented this to us for the use permit application to build a storage facility. So there really was no, no opposition other than that one letter that we received.
Counselor Eric?
This CUP, there's three parcels involved in this?
There were three parcels initially. They've now been combined into one.
All?
All three are now combined into one.
Did one of these lots have a CUP?
Pardon me?
Did one of these have a CUP before this?
The, the original CUP that was extended and then withdrawn was on two parcels, and then the same property owner acquired the third parcel, combined them into one to, to...
So 29 and 30 had CUPs on them, right?
Yes.
And then 28?
There were, there were approved CUPs on this, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor, Vice Mayor?
I just had a question about the two dissenting votes. What were, what was their reason for not approving?
Pardon me?
The opposition, the vote, the two that voted?
The opposition was, from one of the local retail users, it was not too far from this site, and always that, all they expressed was that they, their preference would be to have some kind of retail use on the site rather than mini-storage.
On the commission, the two vote, the two nay votes? Were there two nay votes?
There were two nay votes, yes.
Okay. What was their reason for their nays?
The same reasons, that they, they thought that this would be more appropriate for retail-type use. However, we've never received any kind of an application for retail use. As indicated, the property's been for sale for many, many years. We finally had somebody that came forward for this particular use.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Actually, Counselor Walker, you're assigned to this planning and zoning, aren't you?
Yes, I was at the first meeting when it passed, and then the last meeting when it didn't pass, I was at another meeting, and I had a council member, Ward, came in and filled in for me.
Oh, that's, thank you. You're right.
Yeah.
Counselor Ward, I'd like to turn some time over to you.
There were two guys that were adamant that it should be for some other purpose and two that thought it should be passed. And had the full commission been there, we wouldn't be looking at this. They just, I mean, they had passed it before with the same two guys dissenting. So, I mean, my opinion, I couldn't say anything at the meeting, but my opinion was, right now, it's useless desert. It just sits there. And we want people to get their campers and their boats off the street. I don't see reason not to use that. I don't see where any retail is going to build that far out on Stockton Hill, especially with the new exits coming in. I just don't see it. And I think it's perfect use for the property. It's my opinion.
Thank you for your input. Counselor Eric?
You mentioned that there was an error that, instead of 14 days, it was posted for 13 days. Is that a city error?
Yes, we, the staff, the staff made an error in the way we counted the days for the noticing.
And if it had gone to 14 days, it would have...
Yeah, we, when we, when we published the notice in the newspaper, it was only, I, and I'll go ahead and take responsibility for that. I counted the day that we published it as well as the day of the meeting. I was informed later that that was the incorrect way to do that. We need to have an extra day for the posting, because the Kingman Minor only publishes one day, one day a week. It's presented some challenges for us in getting these public notices out on time. So that was an error that I made in the way I calculated the days. We corrected it once it was brought to our attention, and from this point forward, all of our noticing is being done in the correct and proper manner.
Yeah, with the newspaper being like that, I bet. But I would like to kind of show everyone that we own up and make sure that, you know, we're showing people that we're open for business rather than shunning someone who's gone through the process now twice.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Eric. And it sounds like our, your department has, obviously you just said you take responsibility for it. It was a...
It was, it was a clerical error that was made on our part. We've corrected it. It won't happen again in the future.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions for Mike? Okay, can we have a motion then? Approving resolution number 5520, request for conditional use permit, case CUP 24-002.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 5B, resolution number 5521, request for abandonment of water line right-of-way, case AB24-001. A request from David P. Trivett on behalf of the Trivett Family Trust to vacate, abandon, a water line right-of-way dedicated to the city of Kingman by Mojave County through docket 46, page 297 and through, and 298. The right-of-way to be vacated is 50 feet wide and approximately 615 feet in length, or 30,000, 30,750 square feet, and bisects the property located at 1929 Morrow Avenue. The applicant will be required to have the subject right-of-way appraised by an appraiser licensed by the state of Arizona at the applicant's expense. The appraisal shall be for the highest market value of said property, and the city shall be compensated at the highest market value of said property. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval on a four to zero vote. Staff recommends approval. Mike?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, with that, I'm going to introduce our new Development Services Director, Jason Moqueen. He's going to present the item and the other items that we have from our department tonight.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. All right, before you tonight is application AB24001. This is for the abandonment of a portion of a water line within a right-of-way. So as discussed in the description, this is an application on the behalf of Mr. Trivett and behalf of the Trivett Family Trust. It is to vacate or abandon a portion of a water line right-of-way that bisects the property. As discussed, it's 50 feet in width. It does run approximately 615 millimeter feet, approximately 30,802 square feet in area on property that's located at 1929 Morrow Avenue. This particular property is located within the rural residential zone. There's a mix of residential, commercial zoning surrounding the property. The overhead before you, as well as on, on your screens, shows the, how the property is bifurcated at the subject site. There were an adjoining property or adjacent property that also had a very similar action back in 1997 that went through the very similar processes before you this evening for the abandonment and ultimately to be brought back for the highest and best value under the appraisal. So again, this shows the actual parcel itself in an aerial map format, shows the area to be vacated, which runs through Overall, staff has looked at this, the property itself, from a zoning and development history. Again, this was an old water line that was part of the Hockberry Water Line that ran through the project site area. The water line has been since abandoned. It's not in use. There's no utilities that are in use, therefore that's the reason the application is before you this evening. The applicant does want to be able to regain the use of that property for his personal purposes. The site characteristics, public utilities and transportation, there was no concerns for many of the adjoining utilities with the abandonment of it. And again, it was part of the Hockberry Water Pipeline originally that was in use on the site. Property was publicly noticed. And again, there's no outstanding comments from many of the other agencies for utility purposes. In closing, staff doesn't see any reason as to why this abandonment can't take place this evening. Does recommend that the council approve it, and it was recommended also by the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 10. Available for any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Okay, seeing none. Can we have a motion then for item 5B, resolution number 5521, approving a request?
Oh, Mr. Trivett, did you want to comment?
Yes, I indicated that when I came in this afternoon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Really? I just have the one hand. Anyway, I'm sorry. Come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mr. Counsel, thank you. I, I've asked to, to speak with you because what is at issue for me is the, the core of who actually owns the right-of-way, and through what research that I can do as a layperson, obviously, I cannot see that the city actually has title indeed to the property, to the right-of-way. What I have found is an assignment that was given from Mojave County on September 6 of 1961. I was able to go back to 1958 to search records, and I could find no, no title for that particular piece of 30,000 square feet, whatever it is. And so with no title, if, if what I'm saying is true, and I can't obviously verify it on my own without some other help perhaps, but if, if the, the city does not have title to that, then according to the information in the packet that I was given concerning vacancies, you're to extinguish it with... vacancies, you're to extinguish it with no considerations. That's part of what is in, in here. The, that's one consideration I'd like you to keep in mind. The other is that for the past forty-two years, I've been paying taxes on that. When I look at the block map, which you saw up here, Block Four, it's a rectangle, and if you multiply the short side and long side, you get the square footage, divide that by the square footage per acre, and it comes out to four point six three acres. That's precisely what I've paid taxes on for the last forty-two years. So if that's the case, and the city does own it, and you have a title that can be produced in some fashion, then maybe we can come to some kind of agreement as far as recompense to the city. The property itself, the, the right-of-way itself, has no value. It hasn't been used in decades, and it's never been maintained. There's never been a city vehicle on my property ever to, to do any maintenance on that line. It's fragmented all the way along, so it has no marketability, particularly if you don't own it. So I'm asking the council to please consider this, this in mind when they, they vote on the recommendation by staff, because I kind of disagree with what staff has said. And I was not able to, to be at P&amp;Z meetings earlier, because I have lived in Phoenix for a number of years, and we finally made our way back here and reside here now, so, on, on that property. So I'm not sure if there's any other information that I could give you. I can tell you that on the thirty thousand square foot, roughly, there were seven fifty, I think, thirty thousand seven fifty, I have paid just slightly less than one penny per square foot in taxes. On, I, my records only go back to two thousand and eleven, because it was, my parents kept the records, and there are nothing past that. I would have to probably go to the county treasurer or someplace to try to find out exactly how much money I have paid. But in that period of time, I paid an average of three hundred dollars a year for the property taxes on that strip. And if I don't own that strip, then I would ask that, maybe that could be consideration for what I've already, or what you would want me to pay for recompense to the city. Because I have paid, in, in forty-two years, if I extrapolate that backwards, and most of the taxes, obviously, there'll be some years that were less, especially in the early eighties, and, but there were years when I paid much more, because it was a rental property at that point in time, and so it was assessed differently. And I figured that I paid it probably in the neighborhood of twelve thousand dollars for that, that taxes on that, that strip. So if I don't own it, then I would hope that that could be part of the consideration that you would look at when you're making your decisions. So, I don't know if you have any other questions or.
Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Trivet?
I have questions for Carl.
Yes, I think we all did right.
I, I do have one question though for you.
Yes, yes.
How many tax bills do you get on this particular parcel? Do you pay one tax bill?
One tax bill.
Okay.
And it's on, the tax bill is for Unit Fifteen, Block Four.
Okay.
And of course, the bill, the tax bills themselves don't tell you how much, how many square feet they're taxing you on. You only get that off your evaluations.
Sure.
And every evaluation that I've had from the beginning says four point six three acres. And that's exactly what you get when you multiply the whole area, including the right-of-way strip.
Right. I guess that was my question, because my next question is to Carl on a utility easement.
Well, it's not an easement, it was right-of-way.
Right-of-way, I mean, excuse me.
Dedicated whenever this was plotted, however many years ago. Property taxes, we don't collect property taxes, so that's going to be an issue to have with the county. But this is information that, this is the first I've heard of it. I don't know if the Development Services have heard of it, I suspect not, but I'm not sure. So this is the process that you go through when you're abandoning right-of-way to an adjoining property owner.
If it serves the council, I do have some copies of information that I have put together, that kind of documentation of what I've been saying.
Has this information been given to Development Services?
I'm sorry?
Have you given this information to city staff?
Uh, no, I've just been there now.
Not to sound too presumptuous, this is probably not the best forum to discuss who owns the property. It might be best to revisit this in a future amount when staff can get with, with, with the applicant, so we can sort it out. I think that's probably more appropriate.
It is interesting that all these years, this has sort of slipped through the cracks based on clerical error.
I, I, I'm not sure, because I, I know I've dealt with other, I've dealt with other areas where this exact same right-of-way has run through.
Has happened?
And.
And what's been the precedent there?
It's, it's the city right-of-way. The city owns that property. It's been dedicated right-of-way, so.
So should Mr. Trivet have questioned the council, I mean, the county, for example, why aren't my taxes adjusted?
That's a different, that's, if he wants to talk to the county about that, that's definitely his concern. But I, like I say, I would suggest it's probably a situation where he needs to go back and talk to staff and provide some information, so they can kind of sort it out offline, because that probably requires a little bit of a search instead of trying to do it here.
Counselor Staley?
Go ahead and make a motion. Mr. Trivet, we want to make sure that we've got our staff looking into this and that you get a, a fair deal on this abandonment case. So today, I'm going to make a motion to table this item, and they, and if you could please work with them with the documents that you have.
Oh, absolutely.
And then that, that can come back to us. So I make a motion to table this item.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion, before we vote? Okay, so we have a motion, table this item, and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
If I may.
Yes, the city manager.
And this is probably more a question for Annie. If, if we, if we do motion to continue this, for your purposes, would it be better that we had a date and time specific that we continue it? If we, if we continue it for, say, thirty days, just for advertising purposes?
I'm not sure if we have advertising for this. Do you recall?
If there was a public hearing, we had.
Was it publicly noticed? Okay.
So if I could, I'd recommend that we bring it back, say, in thirty days to re.
I will amend my motion to table this item and bring it back in thirty days.
Councilmember Staley, I just want to note that there is no first meeting of November, so we just need to keep our timing in mind.
Okay, forty-five days.
What are we at? I'll give you, I'll give you a date.
I'll amend my second.
So we have a revised motion and.
An amended second?
Okay, and we have amended second.
Hold on, I'm calculating. Can we do the first meeting in September? We'll go with that. We can make that work.
Okay, first meeting in September.
First meeting in September.
Is my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion from council?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Trivet.
Thank you.
If you want to hand out that paperwork to our city manager?
Sure.
And give him the information, and we'll start from there. Hey, thank you. And Annie, by the way, you did write it on there. I missed it because it was flipping pages back and forth, so I stand, that's my correction, my correction. Okay, item number C, ordinance number nineteen sixty, request for rezone from RR to C3, case RZ24-001. A request from James Bay, on behalf of MAC Investments LLC, property owner to rezonate an approximately point nine five acre parcel from rural residential RR to commercial service business C3. The property is located at the southwest corner of Bank Street and Coronado Avenue. The Planning and, Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval. Staff recommends approval. Jason, again.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Counsel. So before you tonight is the rezoning case RZ24-001. This is a request to rezone property that's located at the southwest corner of Banks and Coronado, and it's to rezone from rural residential to C3. This application is being brought to you by James Bay, property owner MAC Investments. And again, it's point nine five, one acre parcel in area that's being rezoned from rural residential to C3. As the council may recall, this is an area that is a commercial corridor. Staff was also looked at, or tasked with going back and looking at rezoning the majority of this corridor to a commercial designation to bring it into conformance with the city's general plan and to preserve the commercial aspect of it. This is an application that was already in process prior to that, and it's coming before you this evening. And again, this is located at Coronado and Banks. It is currently a vacant property. It does have existing property to the south, which is designated C3, rural residential to the north. And to the east, we have rural residential, as well as portions of C3 and C2, and rural residential to the west. As I spoke a moment ago in regards to the city's general plan, the general plan does have this listed as a, a commercial corridor, so the zone change before you this evening would bring the property into compliance with the general plan. This just shows existing utilities on the street map itself, so it does have access to water and sewer that's already in Banks. As we talked about, it does bring it into conformance of the general plan. It does help further the goals that have been established by the general plan, as well as this council, with respect to the commercial corridor. This would be one of several properties that would then take on the commercial designation and ultimately would facilitate an application for a gym or a fitness-type center that is being proposed by the underlying applicant. The recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission was for approval to the city council on July tenth. Therefore, staff is also making that recommendation before you this evening. Available for any questions?
Okay, Counsel, any question for Jason? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I know you're going to stick around close, because we might have more.
I will be right here.
Okay, it has been brought to our attention that we need to have a public hearing on ordinance number nineteen sixty, so I will open that public hearing right now. Are, is there anybody here in chambers or in public or participating that would like to comment on item 5C, ordinance number nineteen sixty, request for rezone from RR to C3, case RZ24-001? Okay, seeing none, I close this public hearing. Thank you. Counsel, any further discussion? Okay, Counselor Walker, any comment on this, since you're assigned to planning and zoning?
Um, no. That was at the meeting I missed, I do believe.
Oh, is that the same?
I was there.
Smiling?
Uh, no, there was really no discussion. There was a little bit of discussion, but nothing detrimental at all. They went along with it. I didn't see a problem with it, still don't.
Okay.
And this is part of the area we're already trying to push to get it all to C3.
Yeah, we're trying to get it all commercial.
And then commercial along Bank Street. Okay. Anyway, if there's no further discussion, then we have a, a motion approving ordinance number nineteen sixty.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just interrupt real briefly? So I apparently was asleep at the wheel on item A. We didn't do a public hearing on that, even though we've made a decision. It might be best just to see if.
Okay.
There was any public input requested on that. I apologize.
No problem, so I should go ahead and open a, a public hearing on that item?
Yeah.
Do I need to read that whole body again?
No, sir, just, just the, maybe just that bold part, just so everybody knows.
Okay. Returning back to item 5A, Resolution Number 5520, request for conditional use permit, case CUP 24-0002. And we, once again, need to have a public hearing on that? I will open that public hearing. Are there any comments on item 5A, Resolution Number 5520? Okay, seeing none, we will close that public hearing. Thank you for all. Council has voted on this and approved it, and Carl, we can move forward?
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Item number 5D, authorization to purchase a rescue unit. Kingman Fire Department is seeking approval for the purchase of a demo slash stock ambulance rescue unit from Republic EVS. Purchase of the unit will allow the fire department to effectively transport a critical patient when no ambulances are immediately available. This was an approved capital project in, capital project in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-five adopted budget, and five-year capital improvement plan, budgeted at three hundred thousand dollars. The quoted amount for the unit is two hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. Staff recommends approval. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to recognize the work that Chief Jaeger did in, in procuring this unit. This, this is a demo unit, therefore, there's a, a discount in, in our purchase of it, and we will be able to acquire it much quicker than had we gone through the, you know, a, a brand-new unit. So we, we'll be able to get this and, and put it into stock fairly quickly. As was discussed, both at the retreat and during the budget, this will provide that additional support to our staff, our, our first responders in responding when, when there is a delay in, in getting transport to a, a medical facility. This will give us more opportunity to be able to better serve those, those people in need. So this is a, a great opportunity and, and a great find by the chief, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I've got the chief here as well that can.
In case we need a question.
Yeah.
I do have one question. If we had to go through the regular process and order one, obviously, we're getting a good discount on this, what would a normal one cost? Four hundred and fifty? Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Yes, Counselor Eric.
I am so excited for this, because it's not private. I had a quick question. Is there going to be any sort of running payback or any sort of bill that comes after someone rides in one of the city's ambulances? Or soon-to-be ambulances?
Chief, you knew you were not going to get out of, coming up in front.
I was hoping.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, thank you. Currently, right now, no. We, because we, again, don't have the CUN, we don't have the billing capabilities. This is just to provide that service, so, again, our primary responsibility is treating our patients, and the critical level patients. That's the only ones that we will be transporting, that we rely on our ambulance provider to, to handle this. This is when we have no other units available, we get hit with multiple calls, that, that's what this unit is for.
And just sometimes, how long do you have to end up waiting for an ambulance?
It just depends. Sometimes they, they come from Havasu, it just depends on the ambulances where they're at. Again, and a lot of times, it's, you know, we're not waiting the whole fifty minutes. They try and get something closer available as soon as they can, but we, we do have times that we, we struggle to, to get an ambulance.
I am so excited for this. I will be ready to motion when.
Again, I, I just want to reiterate, this is for critical patients that require, it's that time-sensitive to get them, you know, the cardiac's, the strokes, where we have to get them to the hospital, we just cannot wait. That's what this unit will be available for.
For immediate response.
Yeah. And this'll respond as our squad, that we currently respond in a pickup or a Tahoe. Now, this, this will be the unit, it'll be our squad that, that they respond in, so.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Great. Any other questions for Manager Walsh or Chief?
I'll go ahead and ask, Chief. How many times in the last year have we had to transport? We couldn't wait for.
I pulled the numbers recently, but I think when I did the workshop, it was about six.
Okay.
That, that were critical patients, that we had to put them in the B.C. vehicle, or we had one, I think, one or two that we had to put in the fire engine and transport them, so.
Thank you.
Though, this is what this unit's for, so we can effectively treat a patient in the back of an ambulance and not in the back of a pickup truck.
Yeah, that's a hard way to get a ride in, in a fire engine.
What's that?
That's a hard way to get a ride in a fire.
We'd much rather you call ahead, and we'll schedule you to do a ride along.
Thanks, Chief. We have Mr. Brad Shelton from River Medical Incorporated that would like to comment on, on item 5D.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. My name is Brad Shelton, I'm the operations manager for River Medical Incorporated. We've been in this, serving this community for well over thirty-five years. Chief Jaeger and I have worked very closely and have good partnership, and I, one, I want to say that we support this, this purchase and this supplement to both the, the fire department and to the pre-hospital services. fire department and to the pre-hospital services in the area. Secondly, I'd like to defend my organization a little bit and say that it's not as always as bad as it seems. I will openly admit that we have not been immune to staffing issues like any other business out there, or healthcare agency, or fire department. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last probably three years in recruiting and growing and educating providers to become EMTs and paramedics. Many of those leave our organization at some point and enter into the fire service, some into the city's fire service. So not only have we been providing this service for a long time, and very well, again, not without any shortcomings that any other business hasn't had in the last several years, I just wanted to make sure that we say that we support this, and we have a strong partnership, and we would recommend that we move forward with it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Shelton?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, any further discussion on item 5D, authorization to purchase rescue unit? Okay, hearing none. Councilor Eric, would you like to make that motion?
I'll motion for the authorization to purchase a rescue unit.
I'll second.
And we have a second, a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 6, department reports. Item 6A, city code, barking dogs and RV parking. Mr. Cooper?
Yes, sir, that would be B. I think Annie's pulling up my presentation. So this is a result of, I think we had a concerned citizen came forward and had some issues with a barking dog, and then council had spoken to me a little bit about barking dogs, as well as the second part, the RV. So I just wanted to give a brief update and some suggestions to make some modifications to the city code, so if you go to the next slide. So the current city code, I apologize, is a little bit small. Basically, what it does is that there's a definition of barking dogs, which is, I think, is the next slide, but on this slide, it just talks about a barking dog. If it's barking, and no person is trespassing, teasing, or somehow provoking that dog, what it talks about is the criteria for a citation. Currently, what it is, is two unrelated persons within 500 feet. Obviously, we can see that. The reason this was drafted, I can't remember when we did it, is we kind of had a spate of neighborhood disputes regarding code enforcement dogs and whatnot, and you would have a singular person in a neighborhood that was unhappy with something. So we had bumped it up. Originally, I think I had suggested three, the council went to two, in order to make sure that we're not just having a single person that doesn't like anything filing a complaint, which has, I think, been successful. Now, with that, the officer, code enforc, or the officer, the law enforcement officer or the animal control officer, if they notice a disturbance, they can issue a citation immediately. That's not a problem. Next slide. That's just a definition. We all know what a barking dog is. Next. So what I did is I was looking to see what was going on around the rest of the state. Like I said, I found most of them required two to, or more, sometimes three witnesses or complainants. There's a few that are allowed just a singular person. I noticed a couple were moving away from enforcement altogether, and they were do, they usually had a mediation program in their town. I know Tucson, I believe, does that. We don't have that kind of capacity to do kind of a mediation situation, so I don't think that would necessarily be the right thing. I do see a number of them are making them civil or petty offenses. Currently, it's a criminal offense. It's a class-three misdemeanor, which means you can get one month in jail, one year probation, and $500 fine. And that's a criminal record for your dog barking, or your dog getting loose. I think that's excessive. So if we go to the next slide, my thought are, my thoughts are, let's change it to a civil offense, so it's not criminal. It does reduce the burden to prove the case, which is beneficial. We look at a first complaint of a $50, and those are just numbers I threw out there, 50, 100. If we go to three complaints, then we look at going back to the class-three misdemeanor, because the person's not properly learning how to control their animal. I don't know the timeframe, what we're talking about, you know, it's, you know, that many complaints in a year? I don't know what the council would look at for that, but I just wanted to put that out into play for discussion. The other thing is, I think we could add a single complainant if we have some documentary evidence that supports it. Everybody has a cellphone, they can record these things. I know when I was prosecuting in my day, which was a long time ago, I told people to write down logs of when their dogs are barking, when the neighbor's dogs were barking. That was something used to support the case, but I think that's an option that allows us to deal with, if we can't, if we can't have two people, at least we can have one person with some kind of evidence that supports it. I did attach some other cities' forms, as well as some advice on what to do, how to process that complaint. I've talked to PD about it, they really like that, and I think those are things that we can adapt for our situation. Some of that will be to help the person complaining about the dog, and the other will be the owner of that dog. We're looking at finally, I don't want them in court. I think the best idea is we just want peace in the neighborhood. We all understand dogs bark, things happen. I've got people working on my street in front of me, my dogs bark at it, but they're usually pretty calm about it. We all know what that's like, but that incessant barking, I think we want to be able to address that. So that's kind of my presentation on the barking dogs. Thoughts?
So you want to, you want some feedback from us?
Yeah, my suggestion, my requested feedback is, are you okay with me rewriting the code to address it as a civil, and something along this line? And then trying to address it to allow like a single complainant with some electronic evidence that would support it?
Okay. Carl, I like what you've come up with. Obviously, you've modeled this after, like you said, from some other cities.
Yeah.
And I have two little ankle biters that are 10-pounders, but one of them likes to bark when there's people walking their dogs in front, because it gets their attention, or working in the street, and so...
My dogs take turns. I have one that likes to bark in the morning, and one likes to bark in the evening, so I gotta yell at them and bring them in, so...
And the other thing mine likes to do is bark at the garbage truck for some reason.
Well, we all love our friendly neighborhood garbage man.
I know, I know.
Our solid waste people, they should say.
Yes. Yeah, he's just saying hi, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, council, discussion. Councilor Salley?
Carl, are you saying that this would go to the single complaint with the video or to complaints if you don't have a video?
However you guys want.
The only reason why I ask is because I think, in some cases, you might be putting people in a position where you are gonna start a feud with the neighbors, because they're videoing it, and then the neighbors are gonna see them videoing it, and then it, you know what I mean?
I understand.
It might escalate things, so if they have a neighbor that they maybe are afraid of, then they could just get a buddy to be their, you know, other witness. So I'd like them to have the option. And as far as the fines go, I'm fine with, I think this is a good idea, but the fines, I think, should equal staff time, whatever it takes to send, you know, you could get an idea. I don't think $50 would cover the time for an officer to go and the time it takes to get it through the system to give him this fine, so it should maybe be higher than that.
If you guys want me to bump it up, I can bump it up. I think those are reasonable fines. I hate, I don't see fines as recouping expenses. That's not what they're for. They're there to punish offensive behavior and somewhat as a deterrent for those type of activities. So trying to recoup costs is not the proposal here. If you think fines should be higher...
Well, I think you could do both. I think you could do both. I don't think $50 does much, right? I mean, that's, it's $50. Is there also a warning in this program?
Generally, law enforcement just doesn't roll in and start issuing tickets. Usually, there's a discussion.
So do we need to have that listed in the changes you make, that first time you get a warning and you're notified that the next time it's gonna be a $200 fine?
I wouldn't put that in the code. I would do that as more operating procedures, because there are times when the discussion with the individual does not effectuate a warning. Sometimes people just do need a citation.
Okay, I see. I see what you're saying.
It's the officer discretion.
So then, I guess, my only suggestion would be to increase those fines.
So, council, are you suggesting not so much, putting so much on the recorded video, because that could cause problems, but maybe having two complaints?
I'm saying either/or. So if you want to take a video, then it could be just one person, and that's your proof, but if you're nervous about doing that, I could see somebody not, you know, or somebody that's older, that doesn't really use their phone that way, so then they'd have the option of having two people be the witness.
What if they have too much fuss, like you said, working with their phone? That alone, if they're trying to film a dog, the dog could start barking at them.
Right.
So that could cause issues.
So if you had the option, I think, I think that, it doesn't hurt to put it in there that way.
Okay. Council, thoughts?
I just had a...
Vice Mayor?
I just, the examples that you gave us, are we looking to do something along those lines as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I think that's a good supplement and information. I like them all.
Yeah, I've met with the folks at PD, and we kind of went through these, and we all liked a lot of these forms, so I think the idea is to try and tweak them so they fit what we're doing.
Okay. I'm fine with the fine schedule that you gave us. I, you know, I don't, I mean, it's not meant to really hurt somebody, the fine, so, you know, it's just to get their attention, so I'm fine with this schedule.
And most government fines don't recoup the cost of what time hours have been spent on it either.
No. We don't get anywhere near that.
Yeah, right. Okay, Councilor Eric?
In regards to disturbing the peace, is there like a time limit? Is it one minute of barking that disturbs my peace, or five minutes of barking, or all night?
Good question. So we don't define that. What you generally use in criminal law, in law, is what's a reasonable person standard, so it is up to the discretion of law enforcement, of the individual, and it's the totality of the circumstances. So if you're saying it's gonna be 15 minutes long, then you're gonna be recording it for 15 minutes, and I gotta prove it in court that was 15 minutes. So the idea is you're looking for patterns, unprovoked, those sorts of situations. So if the, the more you define some things, especially in the criminal like this, the more difficult it comes, becomes to enforce it. So you have to have some discretion in the officer.
Okay. And this could eventually lead to cases of animal neglect, right? With a dog being left outside?
Yeah, I mean, that happens. So, yeah, the animal control officers, they do look for those kind of things. They're aware of that, and they do look for animal neglect when those issues arise and try and take care of the animals and look at...
Okay. And then for the third complaint, the class-three misdemeanor, there's an and, not an or. You get the one year probation, the 30 days of jail, and a $500 fine, all...
Up to.
Lumps up. Up to.
So I would never, and the court would never, give anybody 30 days jail. That's just what a class-three misdemeanor allows.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I, I kind of like, I'm along the lines of, I don't ever want to hurt someone's pocketbook, but also you have to make them aware and give them a chance to make it right. And I think this is not a bad system.
So it sounds like you're happy with Carl's suggestion in his schedule?
It's a beginnings, for sure.
Okay.
And I do believe that the court does assess, when we set a fine, they'll assess some additional charges on top of that. So your $50 civil fine is probably gonna include some court costs, so it's gonna probably bump up to 75-ish, maybe 100, but I'm not 100% sure on that. But yes, you're not recouping my officer, my prosecutor's, the officer's time. If you did that, you're talking about hundreds of dollars in the court costs, and, again, that's not what the justice system's for.
Councilor Eric?
Just to clarify it also, you talked with KPD about this as well.
Correct.
Okay, so there's been some real expert input on this.
Okay. I agree with Vice Mayor. I think this schedule, what Carl's proposing, is very workable and can be used.
And obviously, if this doesn't seem to work, we can always revisit it.
Come back and revisit.
And I would like to add that, I would like to add this criminal, or this civil portion to dog-at-large as well. Right now, again, it's a class-three misdemeanor, so I'd like to blend the two, because there's times dogs get out, and I would hate for somebody to get a criminal charge just because their dog got out the front door. The only time, the only thing I would suggest is, when I bring it back, that won't move dogs that get out and bite someone to a civil offense, because there's some restitution issues we can get with the criminal offense, so...
Okay. Counselor Ward or Counselor Walker, any more input?
I'm good with everything we've talked about, everything you've presented.
Okay.
Okay?
So, and I don't need a motion or anything, so...
Right.
If we're good with that, we're gonna go to RVs.
Okay.
Everybody's favorite.
Moving on.
So RV parking. Again, this was brought up to council, or council brought this up a couple months ago. Babe, can you zoom in? I'm sorry. I should have made these bigger. The big question is, basically, we have an ordinance that you're not allowed to park an RV, travel trailer, those type of things on the street. We allow them to park, except, with the exception, they can park on the street for up to 72 consecutive hours. That doesn't seem to be working. It makes enforcement very, very difficult, and if you want PD to come and talk to you about that, they're more than welcome. The problem with the 72 hours is you, people will shove it over, they'll move it for an hour or two, then park it, or park it in a different spot. It becomes difficult, nor impossible, for law enforcement to enforce that action. So I suggest on the next slide, three options, or two options, I should have given you three. One of the options is just leave it as it is. My first is either repeal the, second, repeal the ordinance altogether, let them park on the street, or remove the 72-hour allowance and change it to the immediate loading and unloading. That's where I'm at. That's a real brief one.
Okay, Carl? Any discussion or questions for Carl? Councilor Eric?
A constituent had come to council via email talking about RVs that were being occupied on the side of the street that have people living in them without, whether it's a school bus without a restroom in it, or without any tie-ins, they're just kind of camping on the side of the road, because times are tough.
So that's, sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, you know where I'm going with it, so...
That's a future discussion that I am working on, based on a recent Supreme Court case that will address that. This is unoccupied.
Unoccupied.
RVs. So yes, we will be addressing that in the next couple months.
So people visiting friends and have their camper parked out front of their home for a feud, right? Okay.
So I'm just, right, a future discussion.
Okay.
Right now, we're just talking about the empty ones being stored on the street.
Okay.
And if you, if you're okay with it, or if you don't want it.
Okay, Councilor Salley, I know you have comments on this one.
I do, because I was on the council when this was enacted, and it was because a young boy was hit and killed in the street. He ran out, I think after a ball or something. There was an RV parked there, a trailer, and the driver, she could not see him, and he came out, and she hit him, and both families were, their lives were ruined. It was an awful accident, and it was because these large items parked on our street, they take up so much space, they remove the visibility, they don't make it safe, and it was heartbreaking. I mean, I get upset just thinking about that meeting to this day. So I would ask this council to please not repeal this ordinance. It's really important. There's no reason why these large items should be parked on our streets. A lot of our roads are not even wide enough. Right around the corner from our office, there is a huge boat parked on the street, and when we have equipment trying to get through on trailers, we can barely get by, much less traffic going both ways. And it's all over town. You know, if you have an RV, if you have a boat, you need to have a place to park it other than the street. So I just ask that you don't repeal this.
And I would add to that comment that we did open the areas where they could park the areas where they could park these RVs on their property. We've expanded that and allowed, release the, or reduce the condition, so it's a little more easier to park your RVs and your boats on your property as opposed to the street.
And is boats in that thing too?
Yes.
That's included in that, so that, okay, because I, Counselor Staley, I do agree with you. For a number, for all those reasons you stated. And of course, if we were to do anything, then there's always those who try to push the limit and live in the thing. And, and so that, that's another concern. And so the tough part is, Carl and I know we've talked about this, is it does cause our police force more enforcement. And as counsel, we need to be prepared that we're going to pay for that extra enforcement. And are we willing to be able to do that? I would say yes, because it's, it's that critical. But what temperature of the council?
So my comment is absolutely don't repeal it completely. But I am in favor of the loading and unloading. Because I feel like if it's unloading and loading, that's easier to police than the 72 hours and keeping track of the 72 hours. And did you move it? Did you move it back? Then, you know, to your point, if we keep it at the 72, that's 72 hours where there could be an accident. So I, I agree that we should not repeal it, but I would like to see it changed to where it is for purposes of loading and unloading only. Because you can tell, if you're law enforcement, you can tell if they're unloading or loading easier than you can keep track of the hours that it sits on the street. So that's what I, that, that's what I would like to see.
What are the parameters for the loading and unloading? What would that look like?
Well, I've found a few stat, or ordinances that have kind of a definition of it, but it's going to be fairly, it's hard to define that. And again, this is a civil thing, so it's not criminal, so the burden is much less. But it, I, I think, I don't want to say it's, it is what, you know it when you see it, but we'll come up with a definition that you still have to approve. So when I redraft that, I will try and find some language that defines it well enough that we, we get a good understanding.
Well, it'd be a maximum amount of time you-
And that's what I-
You have 12 hours or, you know, I mean-
What I saw, sorry, I keep interrupting. I, I saw usually as a couple hours of loading and unloading is what I've seen in some other cities.
So they can't do what they're doing now and just move it, move it back?
Yeah.
It's only on-
I think that's the intent.
Okay.
And, and I think you, you might get some pushback on that. There's going to be some people that are going to complain about it, so.
Well, I was just thinking, how can we also combat that, that, in other words, fight against it being moved and being right back? Especially if we know it's the same unit it's, it's happening with. There has to be a way to. And of course, once again, I know this causes complications for enforcement. And I want to be sensitive to that, but Carl, then also another question, what are, I'm sure you've, what are, what are other cities doing?
There's a mix, is what it is. I've seen some that's the immediate loading or unloading, others that have the 72 hours. I haven't talked to any of them about how their enforcement's going, because that's, obviously that's more of a PD issue. But this is an issue that I did talk to PD with. And I, I, again, not wanting to talk for them, but I think their belief is they want something that's very specific, like loading and unloading. Because that allows them to do the enforcement action. Because again, there's some officer discretion, they'll be able to, they know what you're doing. You know, it's, it's obvious when you're loading or unloading an RV. I mean, we've all done it, so.
Well, and I just wanted to ask-
Counselor Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to ask Chief Cooper, is it easier to enforce loading, unloading versus the 72 hours? What would you like to see council come to an agreement on?
I just want you all to be happy.
We generally are.
This would definitely be easier to enforce. It's kind of a low frequency, but when we do get complaints, it's high profile. A lot of people know about it, you hear about it. And oftentimes, the violators or the offenders, I don't know if they're playing a game, but they're pushing it as far as they possibly can and it makes it really difficult. It's kind of like barking dogs. These can be very, very difficult to establish. But this would for sure make it, it's pretty clear. An immediate's pretty clear what immediate means. You know, if it's been there all day and there's nothing happening, I could see easily a warning. So if this was to be implemented, that would be my direction to my staff initially for the first few months or so. Need to issue red warnings and we'll keep track and then we'll go to a zero tolerance policy. This would make it a lot easier.
Okay.
And another FYI, this is for rural residential, so it's strictly residential areas. And I do believe there's also a 16-foot threshold. The trailer or the vehicle has to be bigger than 16-foot. So that's what I believe to be true. So if it's a small box trailer, wouldn't get covered.
We can, yeah, and we can, that's something we can address when we write that.
So if you have a small boat and it's under 16-foot, it'd be okay.
Well, I know of a small box trailer, it's probably 12-foot or smaller. And there's grass growing underneath it. It's been parked on the city street for a couple of years. And that's, you know, that's something that we, since we're talking about this-
It may also be registered, Title 28 comes into play, it has to be a registered vehicle and I believe that applies to trailers as well, so.
Correct. Counselor Eric?
I just realized this kind of ends up applying to me in a sense. When I go to a trade show, I end up loading a 26-foot Penske truck at the store, drive it home at 5:00 PM. We have a place at the top of the hill where there's, it's not in front of anyone's home. And then I wake up early in the morning and I head out. But this applies to 26-foot box trucks and, and what's this case?
No, this is recreational vehicles.
Rec, just recreational.
That would be a commercial vehicle perhaps and that would fall under a different section.
Okay. And then, okay, recreational vehicle that goes camping, they load up at night, they plan on leaving it in the morning. Would there be some sort of clear language that goes into the next morning? Cause I, I can see that.
Sure.
Well, I, an RV wouldn't fit in my driveway unless I parked it across all my garages.
My answer to that would be that's where discretion would come into play. And no matter what happens, my direction to my team is always going to have discretion, common sense, and let's try to work it out. Citation, be sort of as a last resort.
And then you mentioned citation. That was my second question, is what kind of fines and fees are associated with this currently? Or if the 72-hour rule-
Judge Singer, well, that I don't know, but Judge Singer can add, he does add court fees and those are mandatory fees that-
Yeah.
In theory, whatever this fee would be, it could double the fine.
But if, if someone was to be punished with the 72-hour allowance that's currently in play, right? What's the fees associated with that or?
Up to, I believe, $500.
Okay.
Again, that's at discretion of the court.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Cooper?
No.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
I would like to make a comment and ask Carl-
Yes, Counselor Walker.
When this comes back to us, can we list, you know, cargo trailers, flatbed trailers? Cause about two years ago, we had a neighborhood come in and they were complaining about it. And I drove through that neighborhood last week. All them trailers are still there. Nothing's ever happened.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was code enforcement through planning and zoning, is that PD? But all those trailers that the guy complained about are still in place in the cities right of way.
Yeah.
So I think we need to make sure we list that it's flatbeds, car haulers, box trailers. Let's make sure we-
I, yeah, I believe it's more than just RV, but I think it's businesses, RV and trailers, but we can address that.
Cause there's trailers, like the mayor said, that haven't moved in years.
Right.
Parked in the right of way.
And then there's obviously a separate subsection for some commercial. And you were on council when we wrote some ordinance regarding some work trucks and there's state statute regarding the work trucks and the allowability. So there's a couple of different phases we have to look at under Title 28 and things like that that we have to address. But yeah, that's something we can-
So how we're currently dividing it, if it's on the street with wheels, it's going to be police related. If it's on someone's property, then it goes to Jason's section, development.
What if it's in the city right of way but not on the street? It's, it's up on the sidewalk or between the sidewalk and the fence?
Then Jason and I will both handle it together.
You're good.
Thanks, Chief. And of course, adding to this can of worms, what about cars that have been sitting? And you, we all have driven through neighborhoods and we, nice paved streets with sidewalks and there's grass growing up underneath the cars.
Quick comment on this one. I think cars are something to concern, something of a concern as well. If you drive down almost any street over by Airfield or anywhere around there, you kind of have to do like this weird slalom thing so that cars can pass one another through that area. So, yes.
Okay. I mean, I just bring it up because it's, should be part of this discussion, so.
So I would just comment on that part.
Okay, Carl?
If it's a car that's a registered currently under our ordinances, you can park on the street. And if you, if it's a registered vehicle, you can have the weeds growing up underneath it as long as it's registered and operable. So I, I get that, because I've been down those, those streets where you have to do that slalom. Some cities do have parking conditions on these, on vehicle, on just automobiles. That's a whole different ball of wax and that's, if that's something you want to address, then yeah, I can, I can work on that. But that'd be a tough one.
You did say a key word, operable, because-
If they're inoperable, that's a different story.
Yeah, okay.
And we can, we can address that under the current codes.
Okay. Thanks for the guidance on that. Any other discussion or comments?
No.
Okay, Carl, I think you have an idea of what we wish-
Thank you.
On this one. Thank you.
We just want to be happy.
Moving on, item number eight, council request for future, actually, I'm sorry, item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members and city manager. Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I've been asked to give a report on, on some of the items that have been brought up during call to the public. Just give an update on, on where those items have, have ended. Just going back, we did have a request for the barking dog ordinance. That was addressed this evening. We had a request regarding some of the banners downtown. We've met with that group, some of the military banners. We've met with that group and worked with them on a plan moving forward. We'll be working on, on placing those banners along Andy Devine. We provided maps to the group and coordinated with them on getting those back up. Staff has also put a number of those banners back up that were taken down during the improvements. They were on Beale Street, they've been relocated over to Andy Devine. There was a question regarding our ordinance and regarding campaign signs. Working with Carl's office, we've looked at that and we do meet state statute. We comply with state statute on that. Let's see, there was comments regarding the airport authority and, and a letter that was requested from our, our senators and representatives. We did receive a copy from, a copy of the letter provided by Representative Gosar. We have that and we've also been working very closely with Senator Kelly's office on, on pursuing the release out at the FAA. So that is continuing. Just an update on that, we have received written comments from FAA and we're working with our consultant to get those addressed. Staff will be meeting with the consultant this week and then we have a follow-up meeting with the FAA on the 18th. I believe, I'm looking for Jack in the audience, yep, on the 18th with the FAA to continue to work through those. So we have seen some progress with the FAA and, and willingness to work with us on that. So we'll, we'll continue to ride that wave and, and continue to, to really address it from all fronts. So we're working on, on that very, very diligently. And, and really, we had a conversation with another representative and they, they've also provided support on that and offered to help in, in, in pursuing that. Representative Gaya had mentioned that, that they would be happy to, to help on that as well. So we're taking help anywhere we can get it. Let's see, we had a request to have these items come back and a report on where we go with them. So we're doing that right now. Let's see, there was a, a request regarding homelessness and the amount of people that are being released from the jail and then, and then being stuck here. Just to provide an update, I've had a few meetings already with county staff. I've got a follow-up meeting this week with representative from the jail and the outreach program that they're pursuing there. Trying to, to look at the issue. It's a, as you can imagine, a very complex issue with a number of different facets to it. So working with the county and, and other mental health providers here in town to try and see what, see what solutions are available and how we can address that better. There was a question regarding the repairs due to a lot of the construction going on. Question whether those will be repaired and obviously any, any work within our right of way that's permitted. They're required to go back and do those repairs always, you know, if it's in front of your house, it's never fast enough, so. But we are, are working on that and we are working with those contractors that are working on, on performing those, those services. Lastly, we've had a few comments regarding waterline leaks and the repairs to the roadways. As I've mentioned, I think before to staff, maybe in some emails, or not to staff, but to council in emails. What we're finding is a number of the waterline leaks that we're having are on service lines and it's generally related to a certain type of waterline or service line that was installed during a certain timeframe. So Kealan and, and his group have been really good at identifying those. He is working with engineering and GIS to identify those locations so we can get a better handle on, on where exactly all that material is, so that we can become a little more proactive in it. We have changed a few of the ways that we address it. Previously on the service line, if we had a leak, we'd, we'd repair it and, and let it go. And then unfortunately, if it broke once, it's, it's breaking on us in the future and we're fixing the same line. So we are now, just if we get a leak on that line, we are replacing that line with a different material so that we, we won't be back out in front of those people's homes. And I think we had a comment on the 16th meeting regarding First Friday. One of the business members was not a fan of the First Friday. I have reached out to him, I've not made contact yet with him. I've left a voicemail with him, he, I've not received a return call. And lastly, last meeting, we had a question regarding El Rancho. I did drive the road with Public Works and I have spoken with the individual that spoke at the meeting. Offered some options and, and I'm going to continue to work with him. He was open to the idea of an improvement district possibly. And he had also suggested maybe some partnerships with some, some private individuals in the area that we might be able to address it with. So we're still pursuing that item. I think that covers most of the items that have come to call the public. But I, I'd be happy to, if there's any requests for future follow-up on any of those items, I'd be happy to go more in depth.
Any other questions for Mr. Walsh, since he-
No. No question.
No question? Okay.
Just announcements.
Just announcements.
Lengthy announcement.
Well, and so I sort of feel that like what he just gave us was more updates on number eight instead of number seven. Is that sort of, it's all, it's all good, but anyway, thanks, Tim. I appreciate it. Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Counselor Ward? Counselor Staley? Counselor Eric?
Yes. So I wanted to present this to the Clean City Commission before I made it here, which I got to do last month. But back in, on May 31st, we had a cleanup initiative that 14 citizens came out to help clean up the walkway between Stockton Hill Road to Harrison. And we were able to collect 14 bags of trash. Thank you everyone for coming to that. The next cleanup initiative is going to be on August 25th. Per Clean City Commission's suggestions, we are going to tackle Mojave Wash, so behind the library. And we're going to start off with a more, we were going to do the whole thing all the way up tomorrow. But I want to, it seems big. And behind the, behind Walmart, I drove by a kind of, there's a lot to pick up there. So we're going to focus on from Beverly to Airway and see how much we can do. That's scheduled for August 25th at 7:00 AM. And we will hopefully try to meet between the library and the shelter, right by the wash if possible. I don't, I'm gonna, I was going to ask Tim if there was any sort of, you know, private land, just conflicts there. If not, that's where we plan. I'll be posting more about this soon. I hope everyone can join us for this and help clean up our city.
Thanks, Counselor Eric. And of course, please be sure to thank that commission and those who are all participating. I know you will, on behalf of council. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to make mention that I attended the Tri-City Council meeting where Bullhead, Havasu and Kingman all came together. We share what's going on in our communities. I also attended the most recent vet court graduation. Judge Singer is doing a fantastic job with all getting those vets back on, on track. And then also I attended the Arizona Town Hall. I think Counselor Ward was there as well. So I wanted to thank Arizona Town Hall for what they did in the chamber also. It was, it was very interesting. So that's it.
Vice Mayor, thank you. And thanks for representing our city on Tri-City Council. I know I was out of town on both those, that occasion and of course, the last city council meeting. So I appreciate your willingness to serve and take care of all that. I only have one thing I want to announce and it was brought to my attention. Our Parks Department is sponsoring Family Bingo Night at the Kingman Academy of Learning Middle School Gym. This is on this Friday, August 9th. And it will be started at 6:45 and I guess there's a dinner at 6:00. So I would, of course, if there's any more questions, please call our Parks Department. Mike, I guess, Mr. Mayor's man, you're here. Is that, is all good? Okay. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may not to interrupt, but I forgot one very important announcement. It's been a little bit since it occurred, but I just realized we haven't had a council meeting since then. Rancho Santa Fe is posted. It's, it's out for bid right now. It's scheduled to close September 6th. So-
So we should have an idea of, well, we will know who the successful bidder is on September 6th.
So that's a Friday, so when will the bids be opened then, on the following Monday?
That's the bid opening is September 6th.
September 6th? Wow. That's great news, Tim. Thank you. Okay. Item number nine, actually number eight, council request for future reports and updates. Council? Okay. Seeing, oh, Counselor Eric, I'm sorry.
So I recently came across an ad from Bullhead City that was promote Bullhead and I noticed that they had a senior services director. And then I started looking into some more and I found out that Scottsdale, Maricopa County, as a county, has a seniors and adult services director. Derby, Kansas, Clovis, New Mexico, and a bunch of other cities all around the country have some sort of senior services or adult services director. I kind of wanted to get an idea of what Bullhead and maybe Maricopa or Scottsdale do with their senior services director and if it's something that we can utilize as well or maybe a senior services commission like Maricopa County has. But I think this is something that we should at least know what our options are, especially with Kingman having such a high median age compared to the rest of the country. That's it.
Thank you Counselor Eric. Anything else? Okay, item number nine, executive session. 9A City Manager Quarterly Evaluation. The city council may go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A1 to discuss the city manager's quarterly evaluation. In accordance with the contract with city manager, during the first year of employment, the council will evaluate the city manager's performance on a quarterly basis. Can we have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Once again, thanks to everybody here in chambers and we are going to dismiss in going into executive session. You are more than welcome to stay around, but anyway, once again, seeing, good seeing you this evening.
We are back from our executive session and our nice discussion that we had with our city manager. And we are adjourned. Thanks again for being part of City Council.